Okay, it looks like everyone has made it switched over from the closed session. Mayor, are you ready to begin the study session?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, you are on.
Okay, let's call to order the special council meeting study session of June 9th. Before we get started, I'd like to remind council of some procedural items for this evening. During the meeting, council members and participants will remain muted when not speaking. If council members or participants have a question or comment, please use the raised hand feature. Speakers will be called upon one at a time. This council meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N dash 29 dash 20 regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Mayors of the members of the public may provide audio public comment by connecting to the teleconference meeting online or by telephone. Use the raised hand feature to request to speak, star nine on your telephone. Teleconference meetings details are available on the council agenda. Comments on the study session must be submitted prior to the time the mayor closes public comment on this item. City clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Mayor Klein?
Present.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Present.
Councilmember Larson?
Present.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Attending.
Councilmember Melton?
Present.
Councilmember Goldman? Councilmember Goldman, you may be muted.
Present, sorry.
Thank you, and Councilmember Fong?
Present.
Seven present participating via teleconference.
Thank you very much. And as far as public comment, note that council will hear the public comment, item three, after agenda item study session number four. So with that, let us go to 2020 dash zero four zero zero Lawrence Station Area Plan Housing Study Boundary Expansion Sense of Place Plan Update. Is there a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is George Schroeder. I'm be walking you through the Lawrence Station Area Plan Update tonight. And I have a presentation here, it'll be about 20 minutes or so. Yes, okay, yeah, so here's the agenda that I'll be going through just to give you update on the background of the study and looking at the main components of the 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 study, the boundary expansion, and also the housing study. And then we also did a market study and fiscal analysis to see what the effects of adding this additional housing in the area would be. And then just go over the development incentive program. This is the program we have to get from a minimum to a maximum density with with bonuses, with incentives. And also to update you on where staff is going with creating the new sense of place plan for the area, and the next steps moving forward. So just to give you a little bit of background, the council adopted the the plan back in 2016. And at that time, the council adopted up to 2,300 units to be built in that area. And really the intent was to transform this area from a industrial area to more of a mixed-use neighborhood and really take advantage of the the Caltrain station, the Lawrence Caltrain station that's there, and increase ridership. So along with additional residential, the council approved 1.2 million square feet of office and R and D space to be built throughout the area. And at the time of the adoption, the council directed staff to prepare a sense of place plan. This will be similar to other sense of place plans that we have in the city where you have a neighborhood that's historically industrial, that's transitioning over time to residential. And also they gave staff a directive to study additional housing, which is what we're doing with this study. So this is the current boundary, the the boundary of the plan is shown in that that blue line. And generally, it's at Lawrence Expressway and the the Caltrain tracks. The north boundary is Kifer Road, the south is Reed, east is Uranium Drive, and the west is close to Commercial Street on Kifer. So a couple of years ago, we we brought a preferred alternative, some options for the preferred alternative to the council. Where where I'll go through that again. And then also, at that time, we were working with Intuitive Surgical, a robotic surgery company, to look at potentially expanding the boundary of the LSAP to include three of their parcels. So we went through the the council with a general plan and initiation, where the council at the time voted to allow them to be part of the the study scope. And with that, the council had also brought up a new pedestrian bicycle route from either end of the plan to the station, and also to look at maximizing trees at open space on one of the intuitive surgical properties. So this is a map of the three parcels that are proposed in the battery expansion. Altogether, it's about 32 acres. And Intuitive Surgical owns three of these parcel, all three of these parcels. And they intend to build a new corporate campus in this area while utilizing the existing balance we have for office and R and D. So this would expand the boundary closer to Commercial Street with both of these parcels on on Kifer Road. So the the preferred alternative is a increase of about 3,600 units, allowing the potential for that over time. And this will bring the total unit count with the the current balance plus the increase to about 5,935 units. So with these increases, we would also be looking at other possible options, which would be reestablishing some of the minimum densities, both north and south of the tracks, increasing the building heights north of the tracks. Right now is 85 feet, we'd be looking at increasing that to 100 feet potentially. And also as part of some new state law, establishing some adapted design standards and guidelines, and looking at potential rezoning for parcels where residential may be approved. So this is the current current planned area with what's allowed. So right now, north of the tracks, we allow 68 units an acre, and that's with all density bonuses included. There's currently a minimum, and with incentives, a project can go all the way up to the maximum. And there's two areas where we don't currently allow housing. This is east of Calabasas Creek, bounded by Uranium Drive and Willow and Reed, where only non-residential development is possible. And there's a couple of parcels, one recently redeveloped to townhomes, and then there's another one that can do about 16 units. And then these are the intuitive surgical parcels, they're they're not currently in the LSAP. We had a couple of recent approvals for larger projects. One was on Kifer Road for Gray Star and the former Calstone and Peninsula Building Materials Site. So as of now, we have about 1,062 units remaining in the balance. So with the proposed study, we're looking at an increase from 68 to 100 years an acre north of the tracks. Patched in in red is the Costco site, and we'll bring this up later, but staff is thinking of a retail overlay. And we would still be maintaining a possibility for for residential, although we're not anticipating it. But we'll we'll ask the council for some of their thoughts towards the end of the presentation. And then looking at studying residential east of Calabasas Creek up to 100 units an acre. So it's consistently 100 units an acre maximum north of the tracks. And then allowing housing on the Willow and Reed commercial site up to 54 units an acre. And this is a lower density just because there's existing residential nearby, and it'd be more compatible. And then continue to not allow residential should the intuitive parcels be included. And this brings to the the 5,935 number total. We also looked at a couple of other alternatives, and we we brought this through when we were showing the preferred alternatives at the time. So option A would be just to look at increasing residential to 100 years to make her north of the tracks. And continuing to to not allow residential in these two areas, same with intuitive. So altogether, this is would be about a 1,765 unit increase. And compared to the 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 study, the previous slide, that'd be about 1,850 less. And the other option would be just to maintain the current allowance of 68 units an acre in these areas north of the tracks, and then allow housing just in these two areas at 54 years an acre east of Calabasas Creek, mainly because it's further away from the station. And this would be the lower, on the lower end of the increase, about 1,075 and 2,035 less than the proposed study. These are just a couple of examples of what these densities look like. The the first two on top are pictures of the Gray Star project on Kifer Road. That's in the final stages of construction, it's about 65 years an acre. And below is a rendering of the apartments at the the approved Calstone project, that's 80 units an acre. And then these are a couple of other examples. This is the 481 on Matilda near City Hall, that's 80 units an acre. The the loft house is a picture on the bottom by Plaza del Sol, that's 85. And we weren't, we were looking at other examples in the area, and and one recently built project was in Mountain View. This is on San Antonio Road, south of California, that's that's about 100 years maker. So for the market study with respect to, you know, additional housing, not a surprise, but we found that there there is a high demand for multifamily housing in the area. And then compared to Perry Park in downtown, the LSAP is is generally less competitive for for retail. Although this may increase with allowing more housing in the area, there'd be more more residents. There's also some retail in Santa Clara that's right at the border, which also contributes to that. And the demand is not as high for for speculative office development compared to Perry Park. But there is a demand for existing property owners in the area, such as intuitive surgical, who are looking to expand. And and then, you know, with introducing more housing to this area, we also have to balance that demand with keeping some of the the existing businesses and encouraging their retention here. And then with the fiscal impact analysis, we found that, you know, with the full build out of the proposed study, it would yield minor fiscal gains with, you know, property and sales tax to the general fund, although there would be some more demand on the city services with increased population, such as public safety. But it it found that even if we were to increase residential in the area, you know, we still find that a lot of the existing businesses in the area would remain because the, you know, they're profitable as they are. And also, some of the tenants own their their properties, such as intuitive surgical. Okay, so for the incentives, this is the the current program. So this is the program to get from a minimum density to the the current maximum bonus density. So right now, we have a list of defined incentives. So with with these certain types of improvements, you get a certain amount of density points. And at the applicant's choice, you can move up to the the current maximum of 68 units an acre. And all these these incentives on the list achieve, you know, broader citywide goals, also LSAP goals, such as increased open space in the area, enhanced affordable housing, sustainability. And so we're looking at a a some revisions to some of our incentive program just to accommodate the increase in density. So we would be looking at a geographic approach to some of the the areas because we want to tie these to our our sense of place plan, which I'll talk about in just a little bit. But west of Kifer Road, west or west Kifer, west of Lawrence Expressway, these are some of the the main components that we're looking at for improvements. So a class one pedestrian bike trail, this is what the council had directed. So it would get from the one of the added intuitive surgical parcels near Commercial and and do a new shared trail to Sonora Court that could connect to the station. And then looking at a new landscape median on Kifer Road, and as well as better bike lanes, class two bike lanes, and then also encouraging retail. And then for Sonora Courts, it would be to look at completing the Loop Road connection. I'll I'll talk about the Loop Road in a little bit. But one part of it is going through the the Gray Star parcel. So it'd be encouraging the continuation of that to Sonora Court. Also encouraging consolidation of some of these parcels, they're usually, these are smaller parcels, about an acre size. And then retail as well to take advantage of the access to the station. And then east of Kif, east of Lawrence Expressway on Kifer, we'd be doing the other leg of the the class one bike trail to get from Uranium to the station. And then the yellow line would be the the Loop Road. And and this is just a both, all of these are are just conceptual locations, they're not the final locations where they'd be. Those those will be determined upon project review. But the main goal of the Loop Road is to connect to Corvyn Road and to bring traffic closer to the station and and off of Kifer Road. But in theory, you could access the station from Central Expressway through Corvyn Drive. And then also, there's there's future plans for a new creek trail on Calabasas Creek, so incentivizing connections to that trail. Willow and Reed just having more of a direct path to the station. So residents south of the LSAP can have better access to the station, consolidating parcels, and also looking at a better crossing at Willow and Reed. So we are looking at, this is the kind of the structure of the revised incentive program. So a project would start at, you know, the minimum density, 28 units an acre south of the tracks. And we we picked that just because that's that's a density that's a little bit higher than what we see for townhomes. We wanted to try and avoid kind of a townhome development near the station, or 45 units an acre north of the tracks. And each project would propose benefits on these different tiers. Tier one are kind of less challenging incentives to incorporate in a project. And now those would likely be a defined incentive where you get a certain amount of points for each one. And then that moves you up to tier two, and these are more larger scale items that a project can propose. And our thought is to cap off the density at tier two, such as at 44 units an acre south of the tracks or 85 north of the tracks. And then to bridge the gap between that and then the bonus density, it would be tier three, which could be flexible or negotiated benefits. And these can vary on a case by case basis. It could include contribution to a community benefits fund. And with that, that could get a project to the the bonus density. So the the sense of place plan, this is just a high level view of some of the improvements that we're thinking of in the area. This, you know, the this is showing the the landscape median on Kifer Road, it'd be on either side of Lawrence Expressway. And then these green lines show the the class one bike trail that would be on either end. And there's actually a portion of the trail that just opened up on another intuitive surgical property that has has an office building under construction. And this would lead, this leads from Kifer Road out to Sonora Court, so for for more direct access to the station. So we'd be seeing a continuation of that on the other intuitive surgical property that is proposed in the expansion. And then this is just showing the other end of the trail, the Loop Road, so it it would go underneath the Lawrence Expressway overpass to form this loop on either side. And there's there's some options we have for for wayfinding and 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 identity in the area. Because, you know, this this area is right on the border of Santa Clara. We want to make it known that that you're in Sunnyvale and, you know, provide better access to some of the the main destinations with wayfinding signage. So we we are looking at a few options. Staff and most of the planning commission preferred option A. And this is, these are pylon signs that be placed at main entry points into the area. It could be on on one of the new landscape medians on Kifer. But the option on left has the push-through letters, and then the one on the right has the inset letters. And the smaller signs are just meant for places, different areas for wayfinding purposes. Also looking at new streetlight designs as as recommended by the planning commission. So we're looking at three options. Right now, staff is leaning towards option C. And we want to also plan for for 5G installations. So this is just a rendering of what a 5G pole could look like. The non-5G poles are are slimmer in profile. But we're looking for more of a modern look, and maybe even that these could be applied at other locations in the city. But just wanted to get the council's preferences on on these as well as a sign. And then just to to summarize the the planning commission's comments, we we went through through them about three months ago. So overall, they're they're supportive of a housing increase. You know, they they were mainly focused on some of the the sense of place items. Number one is the the Kifer Road diet. There is some language in the plan as it stands to encourage a a road diet on Kifer Road. Steph has some some thoughts about that, we can go through more. And then they they encouraged us to look at other street lighting options, which we came up with. And then just some concern about additional residents and how that might affect public safety services. Looking at enhanced bicycle lanes and crossings on the the busier streets such as Kifer and Reed, and then looking at maybe an architectural theme for the area. So for for next steps, we were having the the study session tonight. And then also getting using this as the outreach and getting some of the the public's feedback on this. And then in July, we're looking at doing a draft release, release of the draft plan and subsequent EIR. And then during the comment period for the release period, we've been looking at going to the planning commission, BPAC Sustainability and the Housing Commission to get some of their input. And then towards the the fall time, the final EIR is expected to be available. And then we'd be bringing it to the the final plan, the sense of place plan and the EIR to the planning commission and council in November, December timeframe. So this wraps up staff's presentation, but these are just some items we'd like to highlight for to get just get some of the the feedback from the council on just to confirm the the fraction of density that we're going in. And then the system of defined and flexible incentives. Some thoughts on the Costco site zoning. Again, we're looking at doing a retail overlay to preserve a large-scale retail on that site. But question of whether we should keep the existing density or go to 100 to be consistent with others. Thoughts on the road diet on Kifer, and then the the sign and lighting preference. So this concludes our presentation, we're available for questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any of the council members have questions? Please raise your virtual hand. First up is Councilmember Goldman.
Thank you, Mayor Klein and staff, very nice presentation. I just had a couple of comments before I ask a question. What is that, and please correct me if wrong, so maybe that's the question. My understanding is that the real way to get public transit, I mean, public transit, particularly trains used, is to have a destinations. So if all we have is housing, and that's not what you're proposing. But if all we had were housing, then who wants to go there? You know, great, you can get, you you have people able to get on the train. But there's, the only places to go are like downtown San Francisco or downtown San Jose. And we don't want that because then they just load up. You want to, I think you want to have, again, you're the planners, but this is my impression. You want to have destinations kind of evenly scattered around. So that that tells me that we probably don't want to just like get rid of all the risk on that eastern end. We don't want that to be all housing too. Also, if we make it too dense, I don't know, it's you're gonna, this is gonna be oppressive. You're just not going to have a sense of of spaciousness unless you, you know, build up and and do, you know, some of those older ideas where you have a tall building, maybe you have a lot of open space around it. So the, that's some of my thoughts is that we want to keep someplace, some workplaces, some areas on for workplace so that we can have someplace for people to go. And if we're going to put up more housing, there's a lot of talk all the time of walkability. And part of that, I think, is being able to walk to work. And the high rise to me means that these around here means, doesn't mean condos, means apartments, rental apartments, which means you're going to have people able to, you know, rent a place because they not tied down by a house to to to, you know, live near work, which I think we want to encourage. The other thing is you're talking about a road diet, and everyone's in favor against card, but their effective life, they're going away and they're they're actually growing. So we, we, if we go too dense, you know, this 100 dwelling units per acre, how are you going to get in and out? Now everyone's got to take the train. Might start off, you move there because it's close to the train and you can go to San Jose or something. But then, you know, your your company moves to Pleasanton, or, you know, they have layoffs and the best job you can get is up out in, you know, Fremont or something, you have to drive. So that's some of my thoughts. And the question, finally I have a question. The question is, am I right on this? Do you disagree with any of my kind of hypotheses on this? And, you know, what are your thoughts about the trade-off between having a place to be, to go, for the train station and a place as a destination? Thank you.
Yes, just to speak to that, we would be looking at retaining the the flexible mixed-use zoning. So it wouldn't just be a residential zoning, there'd still be an opportunity for either office or or retail construction. And so, but yeah, because we we do want to retain the the mixed-use nature and then have places where where people can can work and live nearby. That's that's really the the main goal of the of the plan. So that that option would still be retained as part of this.
Have you, have you looked at the traffic about getting in and out? You put in those, I looked at those 100 dwelling units per acres, that's seven stories, that's that's a fair bit. How do people get in and out, assuming not everyone's going to take the train? Do we have any numbers on that?
In terms of of traffic?
Yeah, traffic. I mean, if you put in a road diet out there and traffic is not all that great, I mean, it's not that bad yet either. But 110 units per acre, I could easily imagine rush hour in the morning, it can be a real nightmare trying to get out of your 100 per acre complex.
Yeah, so there's there's only, you know, certain areas where we're looking at doing the 100 years an acre. And and some of the parcels that may be zoned for that, we're not really anticipating that they redevelop to that density for various reasons. But we we are doing a traffic study and, you know, there will be a increase in traffic. However, you know, staff is not recommending proceeding with a road diet just because there would be an increase in traffic in the area. And, you know, we we still want to be cognizant of a better mobility for bicycles and pedestrians. So we are looking at some improvements for that. And also internal improvements with a new Loop Road to, you know, get more people off of Kifer and then be able to have more direct access to the station, as well as with the new bicycle entrails.
Yeah, well, you did a really nice job, and I really appreciate all the work everyone put in. And Ms. Ryan answered some other questions I had about park space. I don't mind density per se, I mean, I I started preschool in Manhattan of all places. So tall buildings don't bother me, but I don't care how tall you So tall buildings don't bother me, but I don't care how tall you build them. You got to get in and out. We don't have New York subways. So, but thank you for your answers and and good work.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Hendricks.
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to double check. If I'm remembering correctly, the Caltrain business plan anticipates additional stops at Lawrence Station with electrification. That's correct?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And I see this is the final plan is coming to the council in December. And are we very confident with that date and we don't expect to see any slippage into the the following year?
Right now, we're we're confident.
Okay, well, I hope in December, we're still confident that that's what happens. I think it's, I think it's really important for us to stay on track with the schedule that we're on. So if 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 that's not going to be December, I would hope we would let the council know right away. You've asked some questions about like streetlights and you had option A, B, and C. And to be quite honest, I'm the wrong person to ask, but why wouldn't we just go with like the streetlight design that we have in downtown, but on pole C? I I don't know why we'd want to come up with a new streetlight design, but you guys can figure that out. Based on the information of what I've seen, I would not be supportive at this time of a road diet on Kifer. The Costco piece, having that stay as a retail overlay so that we can try and keep that. Hopefully, that's going to stay as the retail type environment that is, I think is great. You know, I think we're starting to get up there on the density numbers, but we asked you to go and, you know, show us what density would be and come back. So I'm okay with the strategy of what you guys are doing and you've put there. And those are the maximum densities that could go in. And then the question was about architectural, do we want to come up with an architectural theme? And at this point, do we have an architectural theme anywhere else in the city?
No, no, we don't. That was something that, you know.
That's good. That's good. Then I don't think we need one here of what goes on. And I don't know if you can throw, did I did I answer all your questions you were asking from the slide?
You did. Thank you. And then, yes.
Okay, thanks. Yes, like I said, I I'm most interested on staying on schedule.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Vice Mayor Smith.
No, thank you. I am. I appreciate the update and I will, I think, lay out my preferences and also ask a couple of questions. For the wayfinding, I agree that A is nicest. I think it's bold and the cleanest design. I like it. For the lighting, I I agree with lighting C or lighting B. C is more forward looking with the ability to add the 5G functionality. I like the hooded lights better than the, you know, exposed acorn lights. I think it's it's better for stargazers and wildlife to have the hooded lights. I prefer that. In terms of the retail and then the the road diet, I have some questions about that. I will say that I'm supportive of the higher densities for the housing. And the flexible benefit sounds good, but I I wonder if you could just reiterate what the defined, what the difference in the flexible and defined is?
Yeah, so the the flexible, there'd be a list of of certain items like, you know, proposing a covered bus stop. That can get you, you know, five density points, let's say. And then the flexible benefits, those are are more like large scale items. It could be, you know, a contribution to a community benefits fund and or another, you know, community facility that's provided to the city and that would be, you know, negotiated, you know, for a certain amount of of points to get from the the tier two density all the way to the the max.
So are you proposing either or, like, we have either the defined or the flexible?
It would be a combination of both. And, you know, using the the flexible benefits to to get to the the maximum and then using the more defined to get to kind of about 75% of the the max density.
Yeah, I liked I liked your your chart with the tiers in it with the flexible making the gap, I think. I I like the idea of the flexibility, but also the, I like a mixed approach too, so. Then you mentioned something kind of impassing about the retail overlay, but then maybe the option of densifying the site where the Costco is now. Could you speak a little bit more about that? What 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 did you mean by making it more consistent with the other parts of the of the plan?
Yes, yes, thanks for bringing that up. So right now, we we do allow a variety of different land uses on that site and others next to it. We allow, you know, it could be retail, it could be office, it could be residential. And and right now, the the max bonus density is 68 units an acre on the the Costco site and others. So we were wanting to ask, you know, would the council be interested in maintaining that or or increase it to 100 units an acre like the other parcels that are in that in that same area where we're looking at doing the the increase, but still maintaining a retail overlay. So you maintain that that size of retail.
I'm I would not be opposed to increasing the density. But you'd mentioned, yeah, so it's nor it's north of the tracks and you had mentioned maybe allowing more density there, so.
Yes, it'd really be just for for consistency, you know, but obviously with with an increase, it might put more pressure, you know, for redevelopment. But that's why we still want to have some some zoning tools with the retail combining district to make sure that we still have that, but it could be, you know, maybe a mixed use format if if there is a redevelopment, which we we don't anticipate.
Yeah, I'd be open to considering that. And then finally, so in terms of the road diet, staff said that they would prefer not to have one. Where does the current plan stand and what were the, if you could summarize the arguments in favor, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, well, there there is language in the plan right now to encourage a road diet. There it's basically mentioned as this is a, this would be a good idea. There's there's no policies that really, you know, are at this time. But just looking at it closer, you know, we're looking at an increase of of traffic in the area. You know, at a volume that's that's beyond what's usually acceptable for for having a road diet. So, but we understand, you know, that there there is, you know, that people see this as an opportunity to, you know, preserve more space to basically take out a lane in either direction and then use that for better bicycle and pedestrian facilities. But we still think we can achieve that without doing the road diets, just with kind of visually narrowing the the street with the new landscape median, having new buffered bike lanes that are wider, better pedestrian facilities as parcels redevelop and still using the the same right of way. There's also just the added complexity of, you know, Santa Clara essentially owning half of of Kifer Road. So just having to to get their buy off on the the road diet as well.
Yeah, I'll just state that I actually have the option of commuting through there and I avoid it already because it's congested during peak times, but deserted during non-peak. So I I wouldn't necessarily rule it out, but but I'd like to know more about staff's concerns with it and so, okay, that's that's my, the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Councilmember Larson.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate the update and refreshing us on on the progress in the plan. For the Costco site, I'm open to the proposal of keeping the overlay and also increasing the density. I do want to be sensitive to not making it, basically not chasing away Costco because I think that's that is an important store that that we have at that location. But ultimately, and I think that keeping the density consistent in that area is a good thing. For the station sign, I have no preference. That's not really my strength. Street lighting, I I agree with option C, but again, I I that's a weak preference. On the, I noticed that there were some examples of density projects of different density numbers. And that made me remember a presentation I saw a number of years ago from Dan Zach, a planner who used to be with Redwood City. And he had pictures of projects of different density numbers and asked the audience to guess their density. And the guesses were way off, you know, what what appeared to be a highly, a high density building was actually pretty low and what looked like low density was high. And his point was really that you can't just look at a building and say what the density number is because there's so many variables. You know, is it all studios versus all spacious three bedrooms? Is there a large center courtyard with a swimming pool that you can't see from the street? Was the parking able to be put underground or was it, did it have to be on like the first and second story? Is it mixed use? All those things affect the mass and appearance of a building. So I I hope that we won't make decisions on density numbers just based on those pictures because, as I said, there are a lot of other variables to consider as well. But it is still helpful to have some examples to to get a sense of the range. On the road diet, the fact that we would need Santa Clara's cooperation and buy in to do that means that for me, even being able to do a road diet is kind of iffy. So I would want to make sure that that we have, we enhance our other bicycle and pedestrian amenities in the area. That I think those, I I would be open to enhancing those if we're not going to do a road diet. And I agree with Councilmember Hendricks, schedule is very important to me to get this done. We've been looking at this for a long time and I'm glad that we're going through this methodically. And I I don't want to trip it up on the, you know, the last leg of the the process. So if there are any significant schedule risks, would appreciate knowing about those. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Fong.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, George, for the great presentation. I'll go really quick. So for higher density, I think what staff is proposing of of having all the tools possible to get the best project, that's fine. So having a combination between defined incentives and flexible incentives. I just hope that in the flexible incentives, which I didn't see in the chart, was looking at reduced parking and how that can play a role in incentivizing more density and less people relying on having parking and cars if they're living in those units. For the Costco site zoning, the question I have, just so that you can clarify it one more time. When you say increased density to make it consistent, does that mean increased density for housing units specifically and not commercial retail units?
That's correct. Yes, it would just be for the the residential option.
Okay. But personally, for me, I don't think that's needed. I understand why staff would rather do it now and and not have to visit if the council at a future date had the will to increase housing production there. But for me, I think council already made that strategic decision prior to my time on council before 2018 to zone Lawrence Station for the max amount of housing and and deprioritize mixed use. So this is the one site, I think, of Lawrence Station where it's it's definitely commercial. And I think it re rezoning it to a higher level of density just incentivizes redevelopment. And I I would not actually want to see that. I would want to see Costco stay there. So so for me, I'm against that. Road diet, I agree with Councilmember Hendricks and Morrison. I think schedule is the most important. And so if the collaboration between the city of Santa Clara and us takes too long, I think a road diet can be implemented later, especially knowing that you are going to pursue defined incentives and flexible incentives that can address a lot of the traffic concerns now that may be provided. And then we could study traffic analysis, traffic enforcement later that might warrant a road diet later. And for gateway sign, I actually like a combination of A and B. So having the big design of A, but putting the letters vertically. I actually don't like that you have to tilt your head to read it. So that would be my preference. And for lighting, obviously, option C with 5G is the best option for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up, Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Klein. George, great presentation. And I'll start by saying I was on the committee when I was on the Planning Commission, the Lawrence Station Area Plan Advisory Group. And so for me personally, this is very exciting to see this evolvement and coming together of and a potential amendment to the area plan. Let me, let me try to ask a question, George, and if I need to follow up later, I will be happy to follow up later. But sort of to achieve the additional 3,612 units, that sort of max achievable thing, it seems to me that we would have to achieve a combination of zoning and developers achieving incentives, like the tier three incentives. And so if if we wanted to hit the 3,612 additional units, George, does that necessarily mean that the the space between Calabasas Creek and Uranium Drive would have to be redeveloped as housing to hit that 3,612?
No, it does. It does factor in about half of those parcels redeveloping because there are some pretty heavier industrial uses there right now that were, you know, will probably be there for a while. So we just basically took, you know, what what could be allowed at 100 units an acre on each of those parcels and then divided it in half to get to, I think overall, it's about about 1,600 units total in that area.
Okay, and then part two of my question, George, is to hit that additional 3,612 units, does that necessarily assume that the Costco site would be redeveloped with housing?
No, we're not including the Costco site in our 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 figures.
Good. I feel much better already with that clarified understanding, so.
Add, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Hi, Trudy.
Hi, hi, I just wanted to also clarify that if we zone it to allow residential, we we can't just say, oh, all of the units are used up. There's some new state laws that limit our ability to do that. So for study purposes, we did not assume that every single property would redevelop. If every single parcel did redevelop, it might actually be a higher number, which, but we're not anticipating that.
Yep, I'm tracking. And here's what I'll do, Trudy, is I'll send you an email later on just to poke around what necessarily would have to happen to achieve that additional 3,612 units. And my sensitivities are to the Costco site and then also the the block between Calabasas Creek and Uranium Drive. And I, we can take that offline. Thank you. Thank you, Trudy. So, George, I have some thoughts about Costco. I want Costco to be Costco for a long, long time into the future. And so I would be an advocate for whatever zoning did not increase or add in any way redevelopment pressure on that site. So I hope that's clear how I'm saying that. Okay, right on. So I'll say that. I have some other things written down here. I love Intuitive Surgical. They're a great Sunnyvale company and I'm glad they're here in the Lawrence Station Area Plan area. And I would love for the schedule to be hit by December. You know who else is awesome in the Lawrence Station Area Plan area is Graystar. And they've done a great job with their new development. And George, one of the things we were always hoping to get is that connecting property that would allow us to take the new Santa Victoria terrace that Graystar built and punch it through to Sonora Court. And there's like one parcel, right? Do, has that parcel come through yet?
No, not yet. You know, there's there's interest in that because it's it's basically just the missing link that would form that end of the loop road.
And so then as you're reworking the incentive plan, that would be a thing that's very highly valued, perhaps, in the incentive.
Very, yes.
And that was always, you know, what we were planning on doing, George, when we created the area plan to begin with is we knew that the incentive plan could be updated as conditions evolve and change. And so I love that we're doing this iteration here. A couple of more thoughts. Wayfinding, I'm not an expert. I'm a fan, George, of option A. I would love to see the word Sunnyvale included with the Sunnyvale logo. Uh, street lighting, I'm a fan of option C. Road diet, uh, I say no thank you. Half of Kifer is Santa Clara and I think we have other more productive things that can be done more quickly. Mandatory architectural theme, uh, I think I heard the planning commission talk about that. I'm, I'm not a fan of that. I think individual developers in concert with our professional staff can come up with great things for individual parcels. Um, I'm excited about potentially the block, George, at Reed and Willow. And there was always a thing where somebody said that for the county to do what they need to do on Lawrence Expressway, that some of the, the sliver of the eastern edge of that block would have to go over to the county. Have you ever heard anything like that, George? And is there any update on that?
We did hear that, uh, initially, and there, there is, you know, uh, like an actual sliver parcel that, that may have a, a good chunk of it. Um, you know, dedicated as part of, uh, the gray separation that the county's looking at long-term. Um, so that, that's why we want to, you know, encourage some parcel consolidation, just to, just have more orderly development. Um, and then plan for that whenever it comes.
Okay, and then the final question, getting back to the Costco site, is I think Costco owns the land on which the Sweet Tomato restaurant is built. And Costco even had some application go to the zoning administrator and that didn't go through for whatever reason. So do you have a sentence or two about what could potentially happen with the Sweet Tomato site, George?
Um, we don't really have an update, uh, right now, but, uh, it, y- you're correct, it is owned by, by Costco. Um, but it, you know, it is in the plan area, so a- as of now, it could be a, a combination of, of anything, you know, retail or residential, uh, office.
Gotcha, I got you, George. Good stuff, thank you very much. Mayor Klein, thank you, I'm all done.
Thank you, and I'll be very short on my, uh, comments and questions. Uh, first, I, uh, for signage, I like option A for, for lighting, option C. Uh, definitely, I, you know, all agree with the concepts of, of road diet isn't really a requirement here and we worry, and we worry about additional, um, additional traffic. Uh, schedule, as has been said previously, is critical, so making sure that this stays on track. You know, it's been a long time coming, uh, more than, you know, more than ten years since this was first proposed. As far as, uh, density, you know, the higher the density, the better. I do think that reman- maintaining that Costco site is very important. What is the density for units north of Kifer in Santa Clara? And what's the, what's the zoning to the east of our eastern border?
Yeah, so it, the north of Kifer is the, the Santa Clara LSAP, and, um, that allows up to a hundred units an acre. And then, um, east of the plan area, um, past Uranium Drive, that's more of an industrial zoning. I know it's specifically offhand, but it's, it's more, um, office and industrial development.
Okay, and then as far as, you know, as far as, um, additional items in that area, whatever we can do as far as that class-one trail to me is critical, prioritizing that because that's, that to me is far better than a road diet. And then as far as the vision for the rework of the median, and, you know, from my standpoint, how much of a sense of place that creates is a big question. You know, medians, as opposed to redoing the sidewalks and what's the environment for those people that are walking and/or biking, uh, next to them is far more important than what the medians, what, what was envisioned from a staff standpoint for, for the rework of the medians?
Um, just to add more green space to, to Kifer and, uh, just to kind of shorten the, the visual width of it, so that might, you know, just make it more, more pleasant to walk or bike down it with, it has kind of a, a subtle slowing effect on, on some traffic. But, um, mainly for, you know, aesthetic reasons as well.
Okay, and then I'll second what, what Councilmember Larson said as far as units per acre. We have some very, very small, you know, affordable housing projects with only, you know, two hundred square foot, uh, units that you would never guess are, are, you know, a hundred and forty-some units an acre as opposed to everything being built as two and three bedrooms. So that's somewhat deceptive and that's kind of, that's really dot based upon how our code's set up as opposed to a more form-based code, but that's, that's a problem for, for a different time. Uh, so that's all my questions. I have a few more comments and I'll send them to staff separately. Uh, city clerk, do we have, uh, any items from the public or any comments from the public that wish to speak on this item?
Yes, we have two members of the public that are, have expressed interest in speaking on this item. The first is Cliff Arger.
And you'll have ninety seconds? Since we're almost out of time. Go ahead.
Cliff Arger, uh, since December of twenty fourteen, I've worked at, um, twelve sixty-six Kifer Road. I usually commute through Lawrence Station by combination of train and riding a bicycle. Um, I often have to go to other sites throughout the Lawrence Station area, mostly on Kifer. And I'm comfortable riding a bike, but most of my colleagues are not. So the, the current design of Kifer, I think unequivocally, um, induces more driving trips because I have colleagues who cannot, they can't even safely walk across the street right now. Um, I, I agree with, uh, Mayor Klein that the class-one trail is great, but the class-one trail does not make it safe to cross Kifer at the street level. And it's, it's just a fact that it, it's not safe to cross that street. Um, it's not a pleasant place to be. I can appreciate what, um, Councilmember Goldman is saying about open space, but all of the open space, for the most part, in Lawrence Station area is dedicated to cars right now. Um, just having fast-moving cars is not, doesn't make the, the place pleasant. Um, I, I think there's a lot of, a lot of promise in this plan. Um, I really appreciate the work that staff has done. I, I think the Lawrence Station area can really be a great part of Sunnyvale and a great part of Santa Clara County. Um, I'm really optimistic about the proposals for higher-density housing, but if there are going to be more people living on Kifer Road, I think it's, it's moral and right that those people should be safe walking and biking out of their front doors. And as great as a class-one trail is as a destination, it, it's not, it, it doesn't do that for, for future residents or current ones. Um, thank you.
And Mayor Klein, we, we now have three speakers with their hands up. The next up is Blake Reinhardt.
Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Klein and councilmembers. My name is Blake Reinhardt. I'm the Vice President of Construction for Intuitive, um, leading the new campus for the, for the company. I just wanted to say a quick thank you, uh, very much for hosting the study session this evening and, and for your comments, councilmembers about schedule. And, uh, you know, especially in these, in today's time, uh, in these times, um, both, uh, schedule and, and cost certainty are really critical for us to ensure that we can really make this investment, uh, for the company at this important time. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, professional staff for the coordination and collaboration with Intuitive in processing our application in a timely manner. We're very excited to move forward with the project and after approvals and, uh, break ground in January and to the continued partnership and collaboration with the city of Sunnyvale. Thank you very much and, uh, wish everyone, uh, well.
Next up is Richard Mellinger.
Hi there, I will be very brief. Richard Mellinger, speaking on my own behalf only. Uh, I want to echo Mr. Barger's comments. Um, I believe that Lawrence Station needs a complete streets, uh, treat, or that Kifer Road will need a complete streets program, uh, treatment. Whether that includes a lane diet or not, I'm not sure, but it needs to be safe for people to walk along and cross and bike on Kifer. Um, so again, uh, hope that as the Lawrence Station Area Plan moves forward, that Kifer gets a complete streets, uh, treatment. Thank you very much.
We have two speakers remaining now. Julie Wasek is next.
Hi, yes, um, I live in Sunnyvale off of Reed Avenue, and I think that this looks great. I just wanted to reiterate, though, that the apartment area over here is cramped. So hopefully, whatever redesign, I missed the initial top of it, but hopefully that doesn't reduce parking. I'm all in favor of a bike lane there and making that safer because the three-lane merge that's there now is definitely a little risky pulling out of the parking, um, lot. And also I wanted to just agree with the previous commenter that the bike lane on Kifer, I personally could bike to work, but I don't because of the missing bike lane there on Kifer. Um, it's a little scary right now, and I agree that, you know, going forward, if we're increasing that density, the bike lane, um, is important for ensuring, you know, greener commute options for residents. That's all.
And our final speaker is Alex Schur.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Alex Schur. I'm the Executive Director of Catalyze SV. Thank you, Councilmember Smith, for informing me about this discussion tonight. And thank you for all the councilmembers for your comments on how to make this site as vibrant as possible. That's a huge priority of Catalyze SV and our members. And as we get involved in projects in Sunnyvale, such as the City Line project, we will be continuing to push for the most equitable, sustainable, and vibrant projects possible. And we're really excited about the possibilities of City Line. And we appreciate all the councilmembers' comments tonight, who talked about increasing housing density and other densities on this site. Sunnyvale's a real leader in addressing our region's housing crisis, and we look forward to continuing to see you all do that. Thank you so much.
And Mayor Klein, we've had one more individual raise their hand. Jennifer Rank.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Rank. I'm from Shepherd Mullen, and I represent, uh, PS Business Parks, who owns property in the, uh, in the LSAP area. And I'd like to just direct your attention to the letter that we submitted on the record, um, just to orient folks. Um, the Loop Road essentially bisects my client's property to connect up to Corvin. And we sent in a list of, of concerns and, and requests as to how we may look forward to, uh, getting credit within the incentive program for the loss of, of our, of our property and, and the fact that it would be, um, bisected and would, and potentially impair our ability for future redevelopment. So I, I, I know that that wasn't necessarily teed up for your consideration, but I wanted to sort of put it back on your radar so that you might be able to, to, to consider it as you deliberate tonight. And, um, we look forward to partnering with the city and, uh, want to make sure that, that the, the sense of place makes sense. Um, no pun intended, and, uh, and that, you know, we can work with the city to make sure that we can move forward with, with, uh, our, our redevelopment opportunities while, you know, participating in the, uh, the opportunities that the plan has to offer. Thank you so much.
And that was our last comment?
Yes, that was our last public speaker on this agenda item.
Very good. So with that, we will adjourn the special meeting at seven oh four. And we'll take just a two-minute break and then we'll come back, uh, for our normal council meeting. Thank you.